The Committee on Environment, Land Agriculture and Procurement Reform calls this public hearing to order. It is now 9:02 a.m. on Friday, October 12, 2018. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive testimony on three bills. Bill number 343-34, introduced by myself, is an act to exempt Lot B-1, Track 111, Tumon, Municipality of Tamuning, from the alienation and reverter clause as stipulated in Public Law 21-14, Section 9D. Bill number 348-34COR, introduced by myself, which is an act to authorize Imagalahing Guam to sell 69 plus or minus square meters of a portion of the old Agania PD Road, Old Agania, within Lot 32, New Agania; 82 plus or minus square meters of Lot 237-R-1-R1, Old Agania, within Lot 32, New Agania; 20 plus or minus square meters of a portion of Old Agasbe Street, Old Agania, within Lot 33, New Agania; 24 plus or minus square meters of Lot 237-R-1-1, Old Agania, within Lot 33, New Agania; 8 plus or minus square meters of a portion of Old Agasbe Street, Old Agania, within Lot 34, New Agania, for a total of 203 square meters to the estate of Artemio M. Ilagan, deceased. And finally, Bill 349-34COR, introduced by myself, is an act to correct a lot identification in certain documents amongst the Guam Telephone Authority, the Government of Guam, TeleGuam Holdings LLC, and the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. Notice of this morning's public hearing was provided to senators, stakeholders, and the local media on October 5, 2018, and October 10, 2018, thus meeting the requirements of the open government law. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 4 p.m. on Monday, October 15, 2018. Please address testimony to Senator Thomas Ada, Chairperson, Committee on Land, and can be dropped to the mailbox here at the Legislature or emailed to the Office of Senator Ada.org. And I want to welcome by Acting Speaker Therese Terlahey to the hearing. So for the first bill, we will take up Bill number 343-34. Do you have a copy of that, Vice Speaker? So signing up to provide oral testimony is Mrs. Dolores Tuncap and Mrs. Toni Johnson. So if you care to step forward.
But will you finish?
Yes, yes. Member.
Test.
Good morning, Senator Ada and Senator Terlahey. My name is Toni Johnson, and my mother, Dolores Tuncap, will be providing testimony for Bill number 343-34COR.
Okay. All right. Please bring that mic closer to you, okay?
Closer. Good morning, Senator Ada and Senator Terlahey.
Good morning.
My name is Dolores Tuncap. I'm here today to testify on Bill 34-34, specifically addressing Lot B-1, Track 111, Tumon. This lot contains approximately 161 square meters in Tumon. This lot is situated directly behind the Flowers by Tan building along Epa Road heading up toward the Seven Day Aventis Clinic. A photo of the subject property and its adjacent to Epa Road and Flowers by Tan building is attached. For, I'm here today to humbly ask your consideration to amend the current quick claim deed number 888857, recorded in February 17, 2016. In its pressing form, the deed contains an alienation clause, which present a 10-year restriction from time of recordation. The deed restriction forbids me as the owner from alienating the property to include not being able to mortgage the property. It was through the process of financing the Flowers by Tan building on the adjacent Lot 6R1, Track 111, that the lender brought to my attention that Lot B-1, Track 111 could not be mortgaged or alienated. The deed restriction created a dilemma in my being able to finance the Flowers by Tan building. For to acquire the title Lot B-1, Track 111, the lot served as an easement into the Lot R1, Track 111, which provide access to the rear of the second floor unit of the Flowers by Tan. After the title to B-1, the easement became private property. As part of the building financing, the lender required that Lot B-1 also be included as a collateral with the Flowers by Tan building to the access situation for the second floor at the rear of the building. The deed restriction prevent this and therefore making it extremely difficult to get financing on my building. The following is a brief history of how my husband, the late David Tuncap, and I acquired the property. It was 1993 that the government then offered, adjacent landowners along Epa Road, the opportunity to purchase government land. In May of 1993, my husband and I consummated a mutual agreement with the government to purchase the lot under a payment plan. We were making designated payments. It was a couple of months later that we received the notice from the government that pursuant to AG opinion that the purchase must be paid in lam sum. Given this information and having initially agreed to pay payment plan, we sought clarification and advice from an attorney in an effort to resolve the issue, to no avail and no response. It was not until we received a letter from the government, 1997, four years later, Lot B-1, Track 111, Tumon, to revive the agreement and pay the remaining balance of $23,618.03, including interest. Our attorney made the request on our behalf to pay $10,000 with balance to be paid upon confirmation and review the final legal paperwork for the title transfer. Administration then changed, and health issue arose between me and my husband, which took priority. This will lead to so much time passing. It was not until early 2015, two years after my husband passed away, that I received a letter from land management to pay the balance of $23,618.03 in order to finalize the sale. Quick claim deed number 88887 is the result of what started back in 1993. This is a brief history and a timeline of how we acquired Lot B-1, Track 111, Tumon, and the hardship at pressing to do the current 10-year alienation clause. Again, I humbly ask the legislative body to consider in amending the deed to exclude the deed restriction. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for your consideration today.
Thank you, Mrs. Tuncap. Mrs. Johnson, did you have anything to add? Vice Speaker, did you have anything? Any questions?
No, your testimony is very clear. Thank you, Mrs. Johnson and Toni. No questions, very clear. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, I don't have any questions. And so with having received your testimony, just please make sure the staff gets a copy of your written testimony, and then we'll take care of this in committee. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Bill number 348-34, dealing with the sale of a total of 203 square meters of public, of portions of the old Agania PD Road in Old Agania to the estate of Artemio M. Ilagan, deceased. Art, please.
Good morning, Senator Therese and Senator Tom. My name is Art Ilagan, and I'm testifying in favor of Bill 384, 348. Let me give you a short history and what, why I support the bill. My family was well aware of the Agania revitalization plan. This plan was to realign Agania lots and make them geometrically rectangular. Agania had a lot of fractional properties, but which by itself is worthless. After realignment of these properties, the law allows for the owner who has a larger portion of the realigned property to purchase the smaller portion. In 1980, the government condemned my parents' property through this plan. We litigated this condemnation for over three decades. We won in the lower courts, but we lost on the appeal. We were awarded a judgment for the condemnation, but we have not received compensation. Under the Fifth Amendment of the Constitution, private property shall not be taken without just compensation, and it has been nearly 40 years since the taking of the properties. The reason why I bring up the litigation was the government condemned our property and sold it to our neighbor, but we were not afforded the purchase of the fractional lots around our property. My parents spent thousands of dollars in litigation, and we still owe our attorney over $10,000. We also spent thousands of dollars on appraisal fees for this bill to purchase these fractional lots to make our property whole. This realignment property probably sold several fractional lots to major owners, landowners, who were the bigger portion of fractional lots. I know of two properties that were sold through laws that was passed. It was Moylan in 1982, and recently, the bill that passed was the ECD Group buying the Delacorte Street. My family is asking for justice and fairness from the government. Compensate us for the court judgment for taking our land, even converting that judgment into tax credits so we can take them, and pass this bill to allow us to purchase the fractional lots as intended by the revitalization plan of Agania. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ilagan. Vice Speaker, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Art. I'm sorry, yeah, just, could you just one more time tell me, so the lots that were condemned, those are also adjacent to this property?
Yes, they were.
All right. But you want to purchase, or, yes?
Well, the property that, right.
Or be compensated by another piece of property?
What we were asking for is, at least for us right now, because the bill is to purchase the property.
Right.
But we would also like to convert what the judgment of the court is to some tax credit so we can take, take some credits for those amounts that the court said the government owes us for the taking.
So why do you need a legislation to purchase these lots?
It's fraction, it's government properties. Back in the, before pre-war, the properties were fractionalized. A lot of Agania properties were fractionalized, so we own property with fractional lots around it.
Right.
I think there's five lots that were fractionalized. So we're, we're trying to follow the realignment plan, and it includes these five properties. Mind you, it was very expensive to get five small properties appraised. It's not, and it's thousands of dollars that we had to pay.
But under the current law that allows you to purchase certain properties, if you're the adjacent landowner, you're not able to purchase these?
It takes, it takes legislation to buy property.
Yeah, the law does require that any sale or transfer of government land requires legislative approval.
All right. And so under that statute, is this in compliance with that statute, all five of these lots? Or is the statute only allow for one? Or does it allow you to purchase five?
The way the realignment plan was, was to square off or, or to make it rectangular in shape so that it's kind of uniform across Agania. And our property was realigned, but not passed through the Legislature for us to purchase these five small pieces of properties that are still government-owned properties. What was our concern was they allowed our neighbors to do it, but they didn't allow us to do it. They got laws passed for the neighbors, they got laws passed for Moylan, right here in Delacorte, and also ECD Group, which was just passed recently.
Unfortunately, this aerial graphic that we have, Joe, doesn't really clearly show the situation of what we're trying to rectify here, but if I understand, other maps that I've looked at, the old Agania PD Road that exists is actually cutting into your pieces of private property, correct, such that you do not have that rectangular piece?
Right, that's correct.
That's right, correct. So basically then, what the bill is asking for is that, for example, 69 square meters of the old Agania PD Road that's within your Lot 32, is the, is how much is being requested to be authorized to sell or to purchase, so that then Lot 32 becomes a rectangular-shaped piece of property, as opposed to, you know, the Old Agania Street kind of bisecting the corner of the lot?
That's correct.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Unfortunately, the graphics that we have, we do have another map that shows how those dissections, you know, affect the various Lot 32, 33, and 34. So those little pieces on the corners of the properties added up, comes up to 203 square meters. Now, with respect to the thing that you're asking for the tax credit, the bill does not address that. The bill simply addresses the authorization from the Legislature to sell these portions of the old Agania PD Road. So that's, that's really the extent of what the bill is, is, is dealing with, okay? The issue about tax credits and whatnot for the expenses that, you know, the family has had to bear, that's, that's going to be an issue that's going to have to be treated separately.
Yeah. It was more for the land taking that we were being reimbursed for. It's the condemnation of our property that was given to our neighbors. We were, you know, we didn't get compensated for that, and they gave it, they sold it to our neighbors.
Did they purchase it?
Yes, they did.
All right. Could I ask? Sure. So Art, which is your lot? 32, 33, 34, or?
I don't have the thing, but I think it's, it's all three lots, or?
All three.
Two. I think our neighbors, I don't know if they split our properties in two, and the third property was our neighbors, and they made that whole.
You don't have a, you don't have a copy of the map readily available?
I know this is property behind, like between KFC and the Bank of Guam Santa Cruz, right? I know, I know where your Ilagan apartments are.
Right.
So what is the practical effect of this transaction? To allow you to purchase these, what would it do?
These small properties so that it can be rectangular, like the plan.
But are they adjacent to the building? I mean, these are, or are they already under the building? Are they outside?
It's, it's, it's the plan with these fractional lots in the way, and not the property of our families yet until the law passes that we can purchase them. So what we're asking is, is to purchase these properties. We will purchase them.
No, I understand.
Right. And then for the condemnation, I think that's another issue.
That's a separate issue, yeah, we take care of. Okay. But I guess, are you, you know, I thought under that statute, it was the largest landowner, you know, gets that option, and then?
Yeah.
Is that you?
For the properties that we're asking for were the larger landowners. For that property they condemned, when they made it rectangular, it became a different property, so they condemned that small piece and they, and they sold it to the neighbor.
All right. So for these, yes, it would not have any practical effect if we gave you, if we allow you to purchase these fractional lots? It wouldn't have any practical effect on any, anyone else?
No, because it's on our, it's, it's in the plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's no other use, that's, no other person is using those?
It's too small, yeah, it's really too small.
Just want to make sure. All right. Okay, maybe, yeah, we'll see.
The committee report will, will attach to it a more detailed map, which shows where these, like this 82-square-meter portion, where, how it affects Lot 32 and, you know, and all these other pieces. Okay? All right. I don't have any other questions on this, so unless you have any further comments?
No, that's it.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right. So we did receive testimony from, from the Department of Land Management, simply pointing out that it does not have a recorded map. Has that been taken, has that been satisfied? The land management's concern that they raised in their bill that the bill does not provide a recorded map as a reference source?
They referenced a map that they prepared.
Okay. That land management prepared?
Yes.
Okay.
In the testimony, the land management.
This map's being used. So land management does not, does not object to this sale, according to their testimony? Okay, fine.
Well, whatever cost afterwards to resurvey their land, make it whole, we would do that.
Okay, yes.
Yes, we would.
All right.
Art, what were the costs of the appraisals that you had to get for these four lots?
The one came in was, I think 50-something thousand, I can't remember.
Oh, not the value, just the cost for the appraisals? I'm curious.
Oh, the cost?
Yes.
Like, over 6,000 for that one property.
For just one?
Yeah, and then have another one coming. I don't know what, they're going to bill me for that.
Oh, my.
You know what the problem was? There was five fractional lots, so they charged me for each, and they're just small properties.
All right, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So we'll consider Bill 348-34 as having been duly heard, and now we have Bill 349, an act to correct a lot identification in certain documents amongst the Guam Telephone Authority and the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. So Mr. Tidinko, on behalf of GTA? There's an existing GTA facility there right now. Okay.
Off day and good morning, Mr. Chairman and Acting Speaker. I think it's the last time I'm going to, well, I think I may have one more time I'm going to be able to testify before Senator Ada, but sure, I'm going to miss him down here. Nonetheless, on behalf of GTA, I'm here to testify in support of Bill 349-34. The introduction of this measure came about as a result of discussions between us and the mayor of PD and Senator Tom Ada when we met a couple of months back to discuss the possibility of GTA entering into an arrangement with the Municipality of PD for their lot, which is adjacent to the lot which we presently occupy and have our facility on. And during the course of those discussions, back and forth, and looking at maps and legislation, we had discovered that there was probably a Scrivener's error at the point in time when the Government of Guam entered into the past asset purchase agreement with the owners of GTA back in 2004. So when GTA was privatized back then, there are a number of government lots which then government-owned Guam Telephone Authority had infrastructure and facilities cited. To this day, under the terms of that agreement, GTA leases the underlying land and ground. Through the mechanics spelled out in the asset purchase agreement, we renewed our leases at fair market value, including escalators with the Chamorro Land Trust for several lots, including the lot which is the subject of this measure. This measure corrects the legal description of the lot, which we have been leasing in PD for our facility there, and we look forward to the Legislature's support in correcting the, the current deficiency.
Okay, so, so in essence, I guess what we're trying to correct here is we have, GTA has this list of properties that it is leasing, and the wrong lot was included in that list, and instead, the lot where the existing facility is, is really the lot number that should be included. And so, so we're just basically making that correction here.
That's correct. The adjacent lot next to the facility where we presently are cited with our facilities is the lot that was described back then in 2004, and that's the lot that the Municipality of PD presently has its basketball court on.
Right. Now, GTA, of course, has had this, has been leasing this for the past 14 years, and during the course of that time, did it have plans for the, thinking that that was the lot that they, did GTA have plans for that also?
For the, for the present facility?
For the adjacent lot?
For the adjacent lot. No, but we've had, we've had plans, thinking that with the existing footprint that we're on right now, to go ahead and expand the facility, and that's why we entered into discussions and socialized it with you and the PD mayor, who discussed it with the Municipality, to try and see how we can accommodate any further expansion. The existing footprint where we're at now is going to require us to get the lot next door, or try and enter some sort of arrangement with the owners, whether it be the Municipality of PD or the Chamorro Land Trust, to enable the continued expansion. We presently have a cable landing facility and a rec. Originally, it was just a rec, and we've, we've upgraded it to a cable landing facility, which we, we entered into an arrangement with several entities under the Southeast Asia-US Consortium between us, Telkom Indonesia, Globe out of the Philippines, Hawaiian Globe out of the Philippines, Hawaiian Tel, and a private entity for submarine cable that's traversing from Indonesia to the Philippines to Guam, which is at the cable landing facility in PD, to Honolulu, Hawaii, rather, and on to One Wilshire in California. We're looking at expanding that facility because there's greater interest in, in additional people availing of that, the cable landing, landing, landing their equipment in our facility. So that's, that was the genesis and the ideal here.
Okay, all right. Speaker, do you have any?
Does the lease that you're currently under give a, an area for the property?
Yes, the current lease is actually, was authorized under the asset purchase agreement in 2004. So the first term, first 10 years of that term expired back in the end of 2014. Prior to that, well, we were enabled under that legislation to enter into, there's two options, two option exercises here. One for the first 20 years to renew the lease at fair market value, and then once that is up, that 20-year, we have another 20-year that we could exercise from, in 2035, I think, or 2034? I hope that answers your question.
But are you paying per square meter?
We're paying fair market value.
Per, per square meter?
Not just at that, yeah, just not, not at just that facility, but also the other facilities where you may see GTA's, where GTA is cited. We had to, there was a very, Madam Speaker, there was a very defined structure in which we had to lease that particular, all of those parcels, and there was a formula there that required us to go out and get a full-blown appraisal of each and every lot. We've done that. We've negotiated with the Chamorland Trust and submitted it to them. It went originally from a dollar a year for 10 years under the terms of the asset purchase, the original terms of the asset purchase agreement, to fair market value, which I think were several hundred thousand dollars per year right now. And if I'm not mistaken, we may be the, the largest paying entity to the Chamorland Trust Commission at this, to this day. And there, there are escalators in there, by the way. It's not just stuck in time from what we negotiated, so there's escalators that go up to reflect the, the market value increases there.
So when you, when we changed the lot description of what you're leasing, does that change the amount that will be going to the Chamorland Trust?
No, because the appraisal of the lot that we always thought was under the APA was the lot where we're presently situated at right now.
Oh, so you appraised the lot you want?
Yes, between us and the Chamorland Trust and Department of Land Management, it wasn't noticed until just recently that, well, wait a minute, the lot description is just not lining up. As a matter of fact, if you look at, if you look at the testimony from the Department of Land Management and the Chamorland Trust, they indicate that there's one more lot that was, that, that may have been a Scrivener's error, that's down in Aggett. We present, we've had our facilities, and even this is, this was even before privatization, when the government of Guam, through Guam Telephone Authority, was operating, they were situated on those particular lots. So there's, at some point, there's going to be a need to correct the, the lot and legal description for Aggett, which was in the inventory of all of the properties for lease.
All right, so, so what you're paying under your current lease, you think is going to be what you would pay under if we changed the lot numbers or changed the lot descriptions to match what you, what you thought all along was your property?
Well, we've been paying it. We've been paying it based upon the belief that the lot, which was under the asset purchase agreement and authorized for lease, was the lot where our facilities are, and we've been paying it based upon the appraisals that we had conducted for that lot, so it's still intact.
All right, does this, with this transaction or this bill, if it was passed, did that affect in any way the PD's use of the adjacent property? Like, is that an access or, it looks like it's on Marine Drive, so it shouldn't be?
No, it doesn't affect the municipality at all, because we've been in there and it's, it's been fenced in as well.
Okay.
Just to make sure that we have sensitive electronics and equipment in there.
And, and what is it?
The, the, go ahead, I'm sorry.
When you expand, what are you going to do? Is it, to increase the cable landing capacity? Is that a bigger building, or what are you actually going to do?
It's, it's, it's a building. It's the expansion of the existing building to allow more electronics to be put in there for any would-be parties that are interested. We've had expressed interest by some parties that want to avail of that, and to allow for more connectivity for the community and worldwide.
This, this is not on the beach side?
No, it's across the street from Santos Park.
Okay, see, that's why I'm confused. Do you also lease or own property on the beach side?
No, that, that belongs to the municipality, vis a vis the government of Guam. We, we entered into an arrangement with, I think it's the Chamorland Trust Commission again, on the water side, for where the, we have what are called ducts and conduits that are coming in, where the cable, the cable actually comes in, you know, from, from the water, comes up, they're, they're put in there, they go underneath the park?
Right.
Across the street over to?
Your building.
The facility, that's correct.
Okay, so that's why, because there was some construction going on in that park for a long time, was that GTA?
If that was the one you're, if you're referring to about a year and a half, two years ago, that's correct. So we entered, you know, aside from that agreement, we also noted that, okay, it would be disruptive for the community at some point, particularly the use of it. So we entered into an agreement with the municipality for paying, I mean, yeah, for paying for the maintenance of that park on a, on a regular, continuous, ongoing basis, because they, they're kind of strapped for resources. So we, we do the maintenance for the park.
Is, is the GTA use of that park or the underneath or anything, does that interfere with the public's use of the park?
No, not at all.
Because sometimes, I'm not sure that, you know, they lock that park now sometimes, or at least back then, I'm not sure all the time now, but, so I'm wondering if it's because of your use of it or just they're trying to?
All that infra, all that infrastructure's buried.
Okay, all right, that's what I wanted to make sure. Okay, so build, expanding, what's behind you? What's?
Behind?
Cliffside, yeah.
Behind?
Behind the existing building, it looks vacant on the map that we're looking at, but what is back there?
From my understanding, that was an old school that used to be in PD, an elementary school, if I'm not mistaken, which no longer exists there, is still in the custody of, I think it's either the Chamorland Trust or the municipality of PD, or maybe the latter. So that's what, what's over there.
All right, okay, thanks, Dan.
Okay, I don't have any further questions. So with that then, we'll consider Bill 34, 349-34COR as having been duly heard. Thank you.
May I ask one last question here? As noted by land management in their testimony that they submitted regarding the deficiency of the lot or legal description in the Aggett parcel, I don't know if you guys are going to contain that within here, or that would have to be a separate matter?
I, I think it's an easy enough to matter to introduce a separate bill and, and stay within the parameters of, you know, one land transaction per bill.
Fine, I understand.
Dan, can I get a copy of your agreements with the PD municipality regarding this lot and the Aggett municipality, if there are any?
I, I don't think their agreement is with the municipality, that it is with the Chamorland Trust.
With the Chamorland Trust, I can give you the?
Well, you mentioned the municipality, so if there are any, then that one.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Okay, all right, so with that then, having exhausted our agenda, the Committee on Lands stands in recess until 6:30 PM this evening.